Other than five evening, everything's eleven. How about you?
I would like to call this meeting to order today's Thursday, May 20th, 2014, 7:00 P.M. Our invocation...
First prayer. My fatherly ask for silence tonight. That we might recognize your presence. That with your presence acknowledged, understood, and our hearts open for your guidance. You may do your will. No question.
We establish a forum, Councilwoman woman Castillo, Councilman Morales, Councilman Nieto, Councilman Gerejo, and Councilman Rodriguez. If everyone would please stand for the pleasure to leave us.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Texas State. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and one.
At this time, do we have any citizens' comments? Okay, then we're going to go on to item number one, public hearing. The time is 7:03. Aces City of Fort Worth is holding a public hearing in order to gather citizen input on the curfew ordinance. At this time, I want to hear any citizens' comments on it.
Madam Mayor, if you would facilitate your hearing, could we at least hear a brief discussion about your ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Anybody in your audience who wants to speak? Judge, I want to be sure you got the same one I got.
Thank you, God.
I did an earlier one, so I'll make sure you got the right one. This is an ordinance that's authorized under state law. And basically what we're trying to do is make sure that we're providing for authority for the police to act in public places. And act only where the underage child is there without a parent, a guardian. Or as we define it in the statute, there's a broad range of people who are authorized to act in public places. And it covers the hours of eleven to five in the morning. The problem we have with our existing ordinance is that we've run out of the three years and we've been out of review process at the end of it. So when I first drafted this, I didn't put in the replace, as you see in there. And so we're reciting that we're replacing the prior ordinance. I think all we're trying to do is to provide for some safety on the streets. Give officers authority in public places to inquire as to the good order of our children on the streets between the hours of eleven and five. If you have your rights of minority moved or your defenses of minority removed by a court order, it's not acceptable to treat it. But otherwise, this would basically be talking about sixteen and under. So, and it's a continuation of what we've been doing. I talked to the judge about it. And I think that we're in agreement with the drafting, the way this thing is put together. And gives you the review period that you're concerned about is what was being required.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, other than that, under the council, mayor, this is basically the previous ordinance with a couple of platform changes and a couple of scrubbing changes. Sir?
Eric, where's my spell?
Like I said. Please include that as much.
Why does this call in effect?
This is the first reading. The judge will advertise this and will come back. So I encourage you to get public comment on this. Some people favor these, some people don't favor these. I think the police department generally have followed these for years, but these provisions.
What's wrong with the existing?
Well, the existing ordinance didn't have the three-year and the three-year review built into it. And so we're basically adopting the existing ordinance or continuing the existing ordinance. But we have to have a review period to determine this utility before we mandate after the three-year, during the three-years, before its expiration. And the defect in it was called to the judge's attention and so based on the context and based on the previous drafting. And based on the fact that it also expired, she had to let a couple of people loose lately.
Is that, is that what the vote is?
So we're trying to get it in. So tonight's the first reading. No actions proposed tonight other than the directors. I'll try and answer any questions.
Let's take this one. Do they have, we're supposed to live like midnight to five or something?
I think it won't be midnight. This is eleven and that could be changed. Councilman, if you don't like the hour, you know, we could just cut it to an hour.
What were the previous hours?
I, the one I saw was eleven, but I might be wrong.
On weekends, it was twelve and during the week, it was eleven. And this was, this proposed change will be eleven every night. And the only reason that I like this is because sometimes coming, sometimes you find kids out, one in the morning, two in the morning. There is really nothing to do that, call the parents. And a couple of days later, they're out running about, causing mischief downtown, spray painting buildings and stuff like that. So that, that's why we suggest the latter clock.
Again, it's public places that were regulated, so we do not have authority, and I said we were aware. We do not have authority under this statute and under this ordinance to regulate or apply the program.
If they're at home in the driveway, well, we can't do anything. If they're downtown, roaming around downtown, then that gives us a tool for us to use and contact their parents. Usually, we just give a warning the first time. So this is a city violation, city ordinance violation. Next time will result in a citation.
How many tickets have you all given with this in place? Do you actually do give tickets or you all give more warnings than that?
Well, we do give tickets in this wire to prompt a change in, in the ordinance because you have to review it every three years. So we wrote some tickets out three months ago. And so she had to dismiss the charges because we didn't have the review of the city ordinance.
When was it expired, the previous order?
I believe in 2010.
I don't recall that. I don't have copy of the document.
We, we did bring it in 2010 and the council shut it down because we were changing the time. So they just wanted to leave the current ordinance in place that we had then. But the judge brought to our attention that we have to review this every three years. And without reviewing it every three years, it's going to cause for her to dismiss some of the tickets. Because it always has to come back every three years to the council to see if we want to continue that. I'm sorry?
How many of those tickets? I don't know. Do you know, Judge, what do you charge? Is there a curfew?
It's, it's case by case. I don't set a fine for them. We look at each case and they weren't going to be found or set by the council in the ordinance, whatever fines.
But should they be at that rate?
No, we work on it, whatever you set in the ordinance is. A fine rate.
George, what time is the last movie end of the year?
Usually about twelve o'clock.
So what's going to happen to those kids that go to that next movie?
It's understandable, and various defenses.
They'll be expected, yes.
If there's an exception in the, in the ordinance here, they just got out of the movie and they're waiting for their parents, then, you know, we're not going to take them. But if they're over here in this part and roaming around City Hall or by the memorial, then we're going to say, well, you know, why do you go over here? You need to stay over there. And if we catch them at additional time on this side, well, we're going to write citations.
Madam Mayor, if you look at page two of the defenses, it's 130.21. We could add something in that section that's specific to spoken to being at the theater or in the block near the theater or something like that. To be pointed on that issue. We don't really, I don't think we really address it directly. So we could add that if that's your compass.
I'm sure, I'm sure most parents are asking their kids if you wait and buy the theater and they pick them up.
Yeah.
And the other thing about it is they can be with somebody else's parent. You don't have to be with your own parent. So in answer of Mr. Rodriguez's question, Eric, the answer to that is, is the ordinance was continuing. But because it didn't have a three-year review period, it was not enforceable. And while the council had left it on the books, we couldn't use it. So technically, it hadn't expired, as I understand the history of.
Can you explain page three, negligence supervision?
Do the best I can. Basically negligence supervision, if I can use the theater example. The being, you failed to go down and pick up your child, or you failed to exercise supervision and your child is off somewhere. Somebody from that side, not from that side, but from the Florida Police Department comes and says, your kid's off doing something with a spray can or whatever. And you're not exercising supervision and it happens once. And nothing gets corrected and it happens again. And I think that you could have a basic prosecution. It's kind of a nebulous term, I admit to you. But it's the sort of thing where somebody says, I've seen you once, I've seen you twice, I've seen you three times. And your parents aren't down here. So the form basis for somebody to make a record will make a citation.
It holds the parents accountable for their child's worth?
Worth of money.
Can I hold up because we also have it listed as discussion further down. So I can close the hearing. And then we'll just continue. I'll skip over to that so we can continue. There's any questions, that's okay. The closing is hearing at 7:15. And now we'll just skip on down to three B, which is the curfew ordinance. If anybody has any other questions.
And if you want more attention for the negligence supervision itself?
I just noticed that it doesn't say anything about one, two, three strikes.
And how would you use that for example?
Now we're going to go on to item two, old business consideration in action to approve the meeting minutes for the regular council meeting of May 8, 2014.
Can I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for regular council meeting on May 2,014?
I have a motion by Councilman Antes, second by Councilman Morales. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four.
Sometimes there's more than one, there's like mares.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item three A, the National Community Action Proclamation. Mike, would you like to read that for us?
Do you want to explore it?
You have the letter on.
I'm ready. Can I get it? Do you want to read it?
Yes. Proclamation, whereas the community council of South and Central Texas Inc. was established as a community action agency on May 11, 1965. And whereas the service area encompasses the South Central Texas counties of Atos, Rosa, Vanara, Comal, Edwards, Frio, Gillespie, Waddleigway, Carnes, Kendall, Kenny, Kerr, Medina, Real, Uvalde, Valverde, Wilson, and Zavala. And whereas community action agendas, agencies, I'm sorry, were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law. And whereas community action agencies have a 50-year history of promoting self-deficiency for the limited income. And whereas community action agencies have made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Texas by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs. And whereas community action agencies are needed as major participants in the reform of their, of the welfare system as we know it. And whereas welfare reform in Texas has benefited from the state's partnership with community action agencies. And whereas the limited income continues to lead to opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions. Thus ensuring that all citizens are able to make a dignity. And whereas Texas and the entire United States must continue to promote economic security by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Now therefore, in honor of the 50th anniversary of community action, I, Diana Garber, Mayor of the City of Fort Worth, Texas, do hereby declare May 2014 as Community Action Month in Fort Worth, Texas, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Fort Worth's Community Action Agency. In testimony whereof, I appear unto set my hand and cause to be a fixed the great seal of the city of Fort Worth, Texas, Texas on this 20th day of May 2014.
You gentlemen.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could please. Is that the same list of counties that you saw on the picture that combined the Bay Dog area and the Bay Dog?
I don't know because they, it was addressed to the mayor. They just put it on.
I don't know Bay Dog. I don't know if it's the same.
It sounded like it. I was just curious if it's the same group. Is, where's the Fort Worth Community Action Agency?
It's located at the County Annex, now it used to be at the Benson, but now they're moved. They're there by Dana's office. Okay. With that, I'd like to skip over to four A so we can vote on it. Consideration in action to approve May as National Community Action Month. I can give a motion.
We approve the May as National Community Action Month.
I have a motion, can I have a second? Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Gerejo, second by Councilman Morales. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by zero. Okay, then I'm going to go back to three B and since we skipped on it already, we're going to go on to financial updates. March 2014 Revenue and Expense Fund Balances Sales Tax Report. Is what in?
Madam Mayor, can I read the captions to the formality before you pass?
For which one?
On the.
The ordinance.
Can you do it real quick? Where she starts is right in it.
An ordinance of the city of Fort Worth, Texas, on curfew for minors establishing a curfew time of 11:00. Be advised to find minors under age of 16, providing for sessions. Families therefore, providing for a three-year review period, which was mentioned previously, and establishing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen, good evening. I would like to do the March 2014 budget, budget report. And as I came in late on the month, I still am more familiar of this month financials than I was for the month of February. And I would like to start my presentation with the schedules. And the reason for that is because it doesn't make sense for me to be over quite already written on the memo. Not just when I go and review the schedule. And I want to start with general fund. On the revenue for general fund, we had budgeted a total of $3,645,852. Year-to-date, we have collected $1,893,870, a total of 51.95%. We are four months away from the end of the month. So we have only collected 51%. That's, I believe, a little low. We should already be at least at 75%. But because the new increases in rates on permits and new regulations that have been done have come late on the year also. That's the reason for the low revenue on general fund. Expenses were budgeted at $3,645,852. Year-to-date is $1,575,46, 4.6, a total of 43.21%. If you compare the expenses over the revenues, I do believe that we are in a good status. Because we're not spending more than what we're receiving. Even though we're not collecting as much as we had budgeted, we're not spending as much as we had budgeted. We're staying within the amount. For the water insurer fund, we budgeted $2,655,21 on revenues. We have collected $917,616. That is a 44.13%. At this point, the second tier of rates increase and on rates have not enough budgeted. That didn't come around until the month of April and it's not going to be built until the month of May. So we are not going to start seeing those increases until the finances of the month of May. Expenses for water and sewer budgeted amount total for the year was $2,655,21. We had spent, even though after all those emergencies that we had at the sewer plant. We had only spent $696,306, a total of 33.71%.
Hi, real quick, I just confirm with Councilwoman Castillo. You said that we're four months away, but I mean, is that 51% right on target if it's as of March 31st? Isn't that six months into the year? Is it, the fiscal year starts in October?
Yes, you're right. And I'm counting from May. You're right.
Okay, so then we're fine that as far as compare 51%, I mean, that's right at six months, that's.
I consider it a little low because we should be in between 55, 60% at the month of March. Because most of the collections that you're going to be doing are going to be, especially for general fund, are going to be on sales tax. Sales tax coming right at October, from October to December. After that, that's it. There's no more collection unless you're doing late.
But what about with water? I mean, I know it's, it's still projected with your water revenue and that's not going to hit until, you know, after March. You're not going to get any, any water revenue, you know, during the winter.
Yeah, well, the, the water and sewer rates are low, the 44.13% at in March. Because we're still not at the point where the, the water rate should be. That was not implemented, the second tier was not implemented until April. So in March, we still had just one tier of increases. So that's why the revenues are a little low.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you had a, weren't the projections made on the gold rates, not the units?
No, the projection actually in this budget is actually on the tier based after you all had the study, that you have the study that was done. So the revenue was based on, but it was made in reference to adoption. And so we are hoping that we can be caught up enough to that we shouldn't see much of a deficit in the difference of what comes out of the payment.
Then I'd like you to.
And I do believe that that is expected because we're, we're paying catch-up right now. So we're not going to see all the revenue that we're expecting. And but, and we're not going to collect all the revenue that we had budgeted. There's also a reason why it is very wise to keep our expenses under the collections on a month-by-month basis. So that way, at any point, we don't exceed the revenue that we're collecting.
Are you keeping your expenses at the same shortfall of your projected revenue?
Correct.
You are, so I mean, you're, I understand that your, your expenditures are not what you budgeted. But if you're figuring your 20% off on your revenue, are you keeping your expenditures 20% less of the revenue you've taken in? Because that's the only way it's going to match up.
Well, no, in, in this projection that I have for the month of March, it's a 10% difference. different. Our expenses are about 10% less than our revenue, which is, I think, right on target. We're not overspending, we are not under spending, and, and we have a very tight budget for this year. There's no room for excesses, there's no room for anything other than what is necessary, what's breaking down, repairs, and things that need to be done at the time that, that are needed.
Is that overall, in all the departments?
Well, I'm fairly on the water department, and yes, I will tell you on the fund balance. Uh, in, in that choice, you are giving more on the status of the finance, financial for the fee, on the fund balance.
Ms. Moderno, excuse me.
Yes.
I noticed that, um, on some of the accounts, and this is true, maybe nine or 10, as I look through it, a lot of them are over 100%. So if we're spending more than actually budgeted.
That is expected on a, on a working budget, and the reason for that is because sometimes you, if you come up with emergencies or things that were not expected when the budget was adopted, and that's the reason why, in any budget, for cities, towns, county, any kind of organization that works with budget, must do budget amendments, and that's something that is expected by the auditors also. Because the budget amendments will allow you to do those changes.
And I understand it, so your statement regarding we're not spending more than budgeted, were you referring only to the water account?
I'm referring as a total to the bottom, not by line item.
Okay, because I think the line items are important. Um, isn't that why we've had anomalies back in January that just were over? As a matter of fact, I'll give you an example, and I'm not sure why we had $20,000 to the, um, the budget on legal fees, because the actual adopted budget was for 120,000. And I noticed that in January, we upped it to 140. And actually, if we had left it at 120, and this is the end of the six months, we would, we would have been at 50%. So they're on target. So at what point do we raise, I mean, did we anticipate back in January that we were going to have extra legal expenses?
Okay, when we do the budget amendments, we don't come in and raise up the bottom line of the budget, okay? That is the definition of zero tolerance. You can come in and raise the, the bottom line of the budget for each department, and that is based on your needs, on the city needs.
It's based on what?
On the city needs, okay? Because you don't have budgeting everything that you were actually having in the time. That's the norm, okay? In this case, General Fund was in deficit. Now, on the eighth fee, a budget amendment for the legal fees, uh, not that I want to take myself out of it, but I was not here. I don't know that wasting money, but I do understand that the money was, the bottom line budget amount was not raised. The money was put from something else that they put in there for emergencies, or it might not need it, or they cut it out for them to be able to use this money for legal fees.
So even though several months, it wasn't needed, and I'm talking about line items, will we be doing that with other budget line items?
Mayor, if I may, um, that increase that was in January was actually a recommendation from a former comptroller in reference to the trending that was happening as we looked across the board at the beginning of the county year. That budget amendment in reference to legal fees, and I know that was a line item that was over a year's past, they wanted to make that adjustment because if we trended out the way that the bills were coming in, it was going to come in higher. So we're hoping to make that budget amendment at that time. There were other budget amendments, it was actually for, um, the streets program, there's another one in reference to some new hiring that we had to do, and overlapping in reference to that, that was happening in January. What we anticipated looking at per line item is coming to the council for a budget amendment sometime in June, once we've had an opportunity to review. But that budget amendment that happened in January, in reference to legal fees, if that was your question, was because of the trending, it was based on lower than the recommendation in reference to that. Based on what had happened in years previous, the debt was so much out of line, we wanted to address that early on. I hope that answers your question.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we are monitoring the insolvency plan and to make sure that we're not overspending, um, and stay on adopted budget, and only change it when it's critical, or necessary, or an emergency, like that out of the sewer plant.
And we are, I am closely monitoring the budget, and I, I want to give you an example so that way, uh, it will be more clear to you, or to, to the council. Uh, we received a $39,000 check from a financing company to, that this was already done, to purchase a police car, okay? The, the company, uh, said that the ordinance was not followed the way they had submitted it, it was changed. So consequently, they could, they could only pay the automobile, but they could not pay the equipment. However, they could send us the check on a higher fee for the $39,000, and we will pay the bill. Or, and it was exactly how it was going to come out, there was not going to be any money left over out of those $39,000. Now, that's going to trigger a budget amendment, and that's going to be an increase on the budget. But it's not going to come out of the money that we have in reserve or fund balance to pay for that, because that money, we got it out of, out of another financing source. So that's a budget amendment that I'm going to have to bring into view for approval. And it's going to be the revenue for the $39,000, and the expenditures which are going to be for $39,000, they're offset that revenue.
Today, can you tell us how much, we're still in the red in the General Fund?
Okay, and then let me go ahead and proceed and go to the fund balance.
Let me ask a question. Lou, were you aware of the situation that ordinance stayed wrong? Is she making reference to?
I knew there was some, some message that was embedded, but I don't know if it was what you were talking about.
I mean, police car purchase, that it was wrong, the ordinance, so we didn't get the full funding, we only got partial funding.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying, ma'am.
I thought you said 39, we had to.
No, but it said that they funded $39,000, and only ordinance, it said that it was for the purchase of the police car and the equipment and software that needed to have.
And the $39,000 is not getting covered in?
Yes, it is. It is. The thing is that if the company, the financing source that is going to pay for that, is going to, if they're going to pay it because of our ordinance, they cannot pay for the equipment, so they're going to have money left over. Instead, they send us the full amount of the financing for us to pay for it. That's the only thing, there's no, uh, we're not going to be locked out, we're not going to get this money. And, and I just wanted to use it as an example because that's a complete one. They gave us the $39,000, we're going to spend $39,000. But the way that is going to affect the, the budget is that it can increase your revenue, but it's going to increase your expenditures for the same amount.
Why wasn't the ordinance just, uh?
I don't know, sir, that was done before I came along. But one day, I got a phone call, and this was told to me by the financing company. I needed to make a, a decision, so I went with the city manager, and we decided to go ahead and get the money, so that way, we could get the full fund.
Could the ordinance then correct it?
I don't know at the time that they were calling, if that was nine to do, because it was going to take more time, and if, I, I really, I think we think of that, I think I'm like.
Does that mess with the paperwork?
No, it, it doesn't mess with the paperwork at all there. It was just a matter of technical language. According to the language we sent, they couldn't pay for both, they couldn't pay for the car, so they sent us a check, and we were able to get everything. And they voted to approve it, so we took in the $39,000. But now we need to compensate for revenue items in the budget check, and we have to send the check out.
And we already got a check. All I need to do is, is, I think I got it at the beginning of May. So by the time that I got that check, we still needed two, two weeks for us to get the car. So that's all I'm waiting for, for us to get the car so we can pay for the car. And then also, we already have invoices for the equipment and the software that is going to be put on the car. And I think if we get those invoices, we can just pay them. But we have the complete money of everything that, that was financed.
To pay for it.
To pay for it, yeah. Okay, and going back into knowing how, um, General Fund is doing on the fund balance, when we ended the audit in 2013, we ended with a deficit of $70,278. Year-to-date, and this is just up to March 30th, 2014, our fund balance is 248,163 on the, on the block.
What figure you on?
Uh, I'm on the, the long schedule, which will happen at the end of the report. And it's the very first one. And what this is, is it is taking the ending balance of the fund balance from, uh, 2013, and then all the revenues that we have collected, which is the same as the schedule that I was talking about, your expenses, which is also on that schedule, and the difference is 248,163. So if we continue the way we're going at this point, by the end of the audit for 2014, we have eliminated the deficit and also accumulated some fund balance. And we're supposed to be within three years, which is the second one of the, uh, Insolvency Plan, we're supposed to have nine months of fund balance on the books.
And earlier, that was my question to you, whenever you mentioned that, you know, that as far as revenue, we're at 51%. That's why I was asking, that we've adjusted our expenditures, even though I understand it were 43% to budget, but if you're saying that the majority of our revenue has come in already for the first six months, so does that mean that we cater the back, the back end of the six months to cut even more spending because you know you're going to get as much revenue?
Well, as it is, we're already working on a very tight budget, okay?
And that was my question, I understand the, you know, the, the year-to-date, and then, you know, revenue and expenditures, but, you know, if we're gearing for the second half of the year, which we're already two months into that, have we adjusted our spending, you know, if we're not projecting as much revenue?
I don't see it necessarily, because of the Insolvency Plan, for the, for the three years that we're going to be working for it, we should be reducing the deficit for 33% each year. The first year, which ended on 2013, we've reduced 72%, okay? So now, I'm just waiting to see how much we're going to reduce it. Well, we're going to totally reduce it, but how much are we going to increase the fund balance on the second year? So because we are doing so well on building the fund balance, I don't think that we need to adjust the, the expenses anymore because as it is, we're already very tight.
Maybe some point, will we be working on a reserve?
Uh, the goal for budgets of any organization is for you not to work on reserves. To be able, not to work, to be able to sustain yourself with the revenues that are collected, plus having enough money to, to, to keep on reserve. And, uh, the city, the way the city is at this point, at least for, I want to say, two or three budgets more, we need to reserve a lot of money because we need nine, nine months of fund balance. If you look at that budget for this year, it was 7 million, so, and that's one year. So nine months of 7,000 would be about five, I mean, 7 million would be about 5 million. So we're far away from getting the nine months for the Insolvency Plan, but we are working towards it.
Is that the standard, nine months?
Yes, yeah, and actually, school districts are, are required to have a full year. That way, if they don't have any revenue coming in, they can sustain themselves for a full full year without any revenues coming in.
But we should contain the spending, I mean, to make sure that.
We should sustain ourselves with the collections of the revenues for that one year. We shouldn't be kicking from that, that reserve. And if anything, we should, it's like a, a checking account at home. You know, you get your check, your check, your payroll check, but you're not going to spend it all because you have to save, so it's the same concept for the budget.
That's where the zero-based budgeting comes in.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Any more questions? I like this one.
When you say that we're cutting back, can you give us some examples and what we're cutting back?
No, we're not cutting back. As it is, the city can't eat a lot of repairs. The water plant needs a lot of repairs, we need a new sewer plant. What we're trying to do is continue the country with the current budget. Cutting it back will actually create more problems because you do have to maintain your infrastructure. You cannot just let it fall. It's going to cost you more, and it's going to be harder for you to build a new city hall because there's no grants, that the citizens aren't that going to want for you to spend your, their tax money on building, a building for silicon. So if you let it go, if you already have it and let it go, it's going to be very difficult to build it back up.
So what are some of the issues that we're having?
In, in the city hall? Well, we have animals on the roof. I'm here until 6, 7 o'clock, and there are critters crawling on, on my wall. And then to the top of these things are coming.
Those are spiced.
I mean, there, there's a lot of issues with the building, a lot of issues. We have mold. If you go to the new office that we just moved into, new office is just a, a term, if you see the carpet has mold space, and that is bad for our health.
The jungle dinner?
Well, I have mold on the other office too. And, and so it's in the other one, and on the other one, there's mold all over the, the city hall, all over the.
You did any mold on something?
Somebody, she's those creatures.
And those critters are the ones that hurt me the most because I don't know when they're going to just pop out of the wall and, you know, fall on top of me.
My question is, is worth, is this, do we have enough money for the line item to be doing what we're doing in the back of the city hall?
Okay, the only thing that we did was open a, a space in between the two offices where I and Fanta work, and that cost only $500. And yes, for maintenance, building maintenance, we had $2,000. With $2,000, you can actually repair the floor and get rid of the mold. But we could do that repair because it was only $500.
But according, according to hearsay, and not how true it is, war's supposed to be remodeling the front off, the front office too?
Yes.
Okay, do we have the money for that? See, my, my concern is, I think that it's more important to buy a lot more or we need to, and I know that it needs attention here because, I mean, I want to be working on a new carpet and new paint walls and.
Absolutely, sir, but you cannot buy a lot more with $500.
But to me, to cut a wall, and, and that's, FDIC paying the rent back there, I don't know if the rent went up, or if the rent went down, or the office space is bigger or smaller, but, but my concern is that there's two offices that they're not utilized, they have a table in the middle. I mean, my, my thing is, is there's more important things than putting three offices together, or, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, like I said, but, I mean, I, I know city hall needs improvement, I'm not, I'm not saying they don't need improvement, but to cut a hole in the wall, and, and I don't think it took $500 to cut a, a hole in the wall because we, they had about five or six employees working in that office all day long when I walked in here, so those employees, are they getting paid, or, or they're just wanting to carry their job?
No, they're getting paid, and the reason why they were here is because they were slow out there, so it was better to have out here working than being sitting out there. And then another thing is that, uh, the office of Mr. Tom is the same size as the other office.
Yeah, but, but I don't think he was too happy because, uh, like I said, maybe we're off topic there, Mr. Rupert, but the thing is, we're talking about the monies of, of this being spent, and my concern is, you know, we're spending that money, and, and my question is, do we have that money?
Yes, we do have it. And I can show you the check where we paid $500 for that.
But those $500, you go at least to the, in the red part where they try to cut, you know, offices, why are we rebuilding on offices? Offices, you got plenty of offices here. You can be over there, you can call there, you don't have to build up together, we can walk to there.
I, I personally think that, that anyone that has to do with financial ownership should be together with the financial, sort of speaking, a department, because we, I mean, there's, there's definitely a need you're going to get on the same page.
Well, I'm pretty sure that they can, there are three offices right here where they can all be together.
Well, we'll have to talk to him, hold?
I, I know you stopped for example.
Madam Coroll, first, Ms. Moreno, your help and your complement in workplaces, because it might be also your good, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. Well, the reason why we decided and, and, uh, actually was, uh, Ms. Henrietta and, and Margaret, they decided to do that move, and it was because we handle confidential information, employee information, insurance information, uh, budget, uh, checks, and all of that. And they're all running around from office to office when we're all together in there, and it's, the communication is a lot better, it's improved. Uh, things don't take us long because if this person is not there, but the office is locked, so we can sort of off the check, and then the following day, she comes to be in, but I'm not, and the checks are still in my office, and, and in this way, we're all together there.
Why don't you put the mayor with you, the mayor with you too, because she's gotta sign checks too?
Okay, well, this concludes my financial report, and do you have any more questions?
Can you dress the hotel motel, please?
Okay, what do you wanna know?
How much do I have to date, and how much have we given to the Chamber for the tourist department?
Uh, can you say that again?
What is the balance at the end of March, and how much of that have we given to the tourist department? Tourist department?
Uh, Madam, your question in reference to the tourist bureau? I, I didn't quite hear your question.
The Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber of Commerce or the tourist department, the...
The council hasn't approved anything in reference to payment.
So we don't have a contractual agreement with them yet?
They have a freeze, they have a freeze into those parties.
Nothing has changed in reference to, uh, the mayor, and Mr. Fong Hwan, in reference to some things in reference to coming with some issues. I reported on it earlier in the year, in reference to a board coming forward. But right now, we're, as the Chamber of Commerce is in transition, and, and, as, as you know, they have to relocate, to relocation, and that will be before the board very soon.